Okay, at this time, if there's nothing further for Dave, he can turn it over to Harold for your presentation.
Okay. So I'm not technically the last one. We'll have Brian Billingsley, our Community Development and Economic Development Director, present tomorrow. He wasn't available this evening because he has planned a zoning commission. I think had we known that we'd be as ahead of schedule as we were yesterday, we probably would've tried to squeeze him in yesterday, but... So I won't be the last, but I'm almost the last, and one of the disadvantages of going last is you've probably heard it all. So I'll be talking to Mike down there because he hasn't been here for the last day and a half, two days?
In my opinion, I have been YouTubing.
Okay.
Got all yesterday covered. Today I'm running behind, but hey.
Thanks for...
It's like I'm homeschooling, right?
Okay.
All that class.
Well, thanks for popping my bubble that you've heard it all already, so... So I'm gonna do this from two different perspectives. First and foremost, my cost as a city manager is an office directly. And then I'm gonna talk a little bit about what you guys pay me for, and that is the big picture of what I see as a city manager across the organization, trends and changes that I think need to be points of conversation and consideration through the budget process. So I'm probably gonna focus more on that latter part than I am on the first. Because the first one is pretty simple. I don't have any changes. I'm not proposing adding any positions to the city manager's office. I don't have any needs for upgrades to software or equipment or anything like that. Most of the departments that report directly to me, you've already heard from. The City Clerk's Office, the PIO Office, CBG NDR, HR, Finance, and then also a Police and Fire report directly to me. So all of those. I do also have the City Auditor, the Internal Auditor, that reports directly to me. And I have monthly meetings with all of them. So probably the only one you probably haven't heard from is Jeannie, our Internal Auditor. But she's not gonna have any additional changes or anything. The other one I forgot of is Municipal Court. That was a recent change here, about a year and a half or so ago. We separated Municipal Court out from underneath the Police Department. And Municipal Court now reports directly to me instead of the Police Chief, so... But I don't have any changes. I don't have any proposed updates. I'm not gonna rock the boat and create another Assistant City Manager or an Assistant to the Manager position or anything like that this year. So let's focus a little bit organization-wide. And I'm gonna focus first on Personnel. Over the last couple of days, you've heard a lot of requests and needs across the organization. The ones that rise for me, and two of these you haven't heard yet because Brian hasn't presented his, but I anticipate you'll hear these tomorrow morning as part of his presentation. I think the three firefighter positions that come out of this CPSM study are important to increase NFPA safety for our firefighters. I think that's just critical going forward. I've had concerns in the last three years I've been here that our Fire Department is woefully understaffed. And I think the CPSM study verifies that. I understand somewhat how it got there, but in my opinion, the Fire Department is not one of the place to cut corners. And trust me, if you talk to the Fire Department today, they probably do not believe that I'm an advocate for them for money, but really I am. You know, being a city manager, it's like kinda being the dad of a family, and each of the departments are kinda like your kids. Everyone thinks that the other kid is their favorite, is your favorite, and then none of the other ones are. And I don't really try to play favorites, but as is indicated in the Citizen Satisfaction Survey, and as is traditional with City Services, one of the reasons that you live in a city as opposed to an urban environment is for the improved public safety services, Police and Fire. Those are core services that we provide. I don't wanna undermine the role and the importance of our other departments. You know, we can argue all day which is more important, the foot, or the hand, or the heart, or the brain. At the end of the day, they're all part of the body, but our core services that the public relies on is public safety. And so... And again, I think our Fire Department is understaffed. It's documented within the CPSM study, and it'll be one of my goals and priorities over the coming years to try and help remedy that challenge and that issue. When it came to the Police Department, what I took from the CPSM study, although listening to the Chief talk yesterday, I don't know if he completely agrees, but we'll have that conversation at a later date. But what I heard is that we're adequately staffed. We just need to allocate our resources better for better efficiency within that department. And there may be some upgrades to some internal positions, both in Police and Fire, to help do that. But when it comes to total number of manpower, we're sitting pretty well in the Police Department right now. That's what I took from the CPSM study. That warrants further conversation later. Community Development, with our growth and our trajectory and the workload that we're seeing within that department, and we've held off on this for a little while. It's been asked for for the last probably eighteen months or so. And we've held off on is a Commercial Plan Reviewer to help expedite some of those plans and relieve some of the workload and the stress off of some of the staff within that department. Next is a Code Enforcement Position that comes almost directly out of the Community Satisfaction Survey. This is the second time in a row that code enforcement has been identified as a high priority by our citizens. We have been taken approach. We have one code enforcement officer, and we do it as a reactive effort. In other words, you have to call and complain before we'll send somebody out. I would like to get to a position that we have staff that are more proactive, and we have more resources to go identify those issues and follow up on those issues, to remedy those issues in our residential and commercial sections, as it was identified within two Community Satisfaction Surveys now at this point. I would also like to add a payroll position. This could be somewhat streamlined with Lisa's request yesterday for an additional person in HR. But here on the other side, I'll talk a little bit about what my plans and thoughts are on with regards to that. Organizational-wide, as far as Personnel Issues, mental health, I think is an area that we need to develop more programs and resources within. We've been talking about that internally as a management team, looking at alternatives. We are trying to keep those costs down where we can, but there needs to be a cultural, and pardon the pun, mental shift as us as an organization with regards to the importance of this component of our employees' lives and how we address it to be an employer of choice to our employees. Along with that is Health and Wellness. I know I've mentioned this over the last couple of years of developing a better Health and Wellness Program to help us manage and curb the costs of our claims within our health insurance. I've kinda been waiting for HR to dig themselves out and get the payroll software complete and those kinds of things. And I think we're to a point there now that at least some of those major issues are off of their plate, and maybe we'll have some time to dedicate some more time to that. Another one along the lines of Health Insurance is developing a Health Savings Account Alternative for Employees. Now, I wanna caveat this. I am not saying that I wanna move the entire organization to a Health Savings Account for health insurance for all employees. What I'm saying is I think it should be an alternative available to our employees, that if that fits for them, that we as an employer should make that alternative available to them. It comes with a very high education component to it. There's a lot of misunderstanding and fear of that as an alternative. And I'll admit that when I was younger and I had employers that offered it, I didn't think it was a good alternative. But if you're living a healthy life, and it's a way for you to put money away in a Health Savings Account and receive some tax deductions, that later on, when you do need it, it's there and available to you. And I think it's a valuable alternative that we should at least offer to our employees. In addition, it takes some of the risk off of our health insurance plan and our costs. So it saves us money as an employer down the road as well, so... I will be... Having said that, I will say that I would be cautious on how, if we do move forward with this, on how we move forward and how we roll it out, because there's still some tenderness and some animosity with regards to recent changes of benefits and those kinds of things. And this could be misperceived as potentially taking something else away from them, which again is why I give the caveat. I am not recommending that we mandate this or make this our health insurance plan. I think it's an alternative that we should put as an option available to employees should they choose to elect to do it. Employee Annual Satisfaction Survey. This was mentioned a little bit yesterday with the HR presentation. I would like to do an annual evaluation or survey of our employees with regards to satisfaction and morale and those kinds of things to help us make sure that we're in touch and we're making good decisions as an employer on behalf of our employees. Work Remote Policy. This is something that we have been discussing internally as a management team for the last several months. We've been testing it in some departments. We had a military airman who was working on a degree that needed basically an internship project, a research project. We had him research our current policy that we've developed to this point and also pull information and research with regards to best practices throughout the country. And so I think we're at a point there. I guess the main question that I have for Council is, again, this is a bit of a political and cultural shift with regards to this. We're not too far removed from when communities and councils looked at the investment in employees as a local investment, right? So we had policies on the books, like if you were a city employee, you were required to live within city limits, or you're required to live within a certain amount of city limits. And because we pay them a good pay, and then we want them to take and spend that money locally, which generates momentum within our local economy, right? So for me, the work remote policy creates two potential challenges to this ideology that I wanna make sure that the council's on board with and comfortable. The first one is what I would call a hybrid work remote policy, which means that our employees likely live within the area, but we allow them to work from home if appropriate, maybe two or three days a week, that they have that flexibility to not just be in the brick and mortar or an office here at the building, but they have the flexibility to work remotely even though they live in town. That's a methodology that we have been testing. And seems to work well. And I will tell you with the younger generations, this is becoming an expectation in a smaller pool of candidates for positions and becoming a more competitive environment. This is becoming an expectation of those younger generations and those younger professionals where they will not, it doesn't matter how much money you throw at them as a job, they will take a pay cut to work for someone else that gives them work remote capability, right? So that's the first phase of it. The second phase is because we are having challenges hiring professionals like engineers, planners, and those kinds of things, is whether or not you hire somebody who is a city employee but pretty much works remotely almost the majority of the time. So whether you hire someone in Kansas City or Chicago, they're willing to do the work for you, that's something that they can do remotely, reviewing plans, doing design work, those kinds of things. But rather than living in your community, they're almost primarily a hundred percent remote and connect with your organization more via virtual teams and those kinds of things. And maybe on occasion, come into town for an in-person face-to-face meeting, but primarily, a lot of their work is done remotely. Again, with shrinking workforce pools and difficulties of hiring and filling these positions and the workflows that we have stacking up, it may be time to consider some of these options and alternatives. But I wanted to hear feedback from the Council, because again, I'm sensitive to that local investment argument. It's a legitimate point. It's a legitimate argument. But I think we're being forced in a position that we have to reconsider some of those policies. And to some degree, and I believe Minot has done this as well, is a lot of those policies have been loosened up or eliminated over the years, right? I don't think Minot has a requirement anymore that a city employee has to live within the city of Minot. And even in some communities that, you know, the last kinda area to hold tight on was police officers and firefighters had to live within the community or within a certain response time. And I think Minot has even alleviated those policies and eliminated those policies. So we've currently already gone that direction, but that still doesn't mean that we're comfortable going all the way to those two phases of work remote. So I'll be looking for information and feedback from the Council with regards to what your thoughts and feelings are on that. I do have a couple of employees that are on the brink of potentially retiring. They are willing to work for us part-time or even full-time for a little while longer if we're allowed them to work for remote. And they're waiting for some answers on that. I have given them... Those departments have the green light to go ahead and do that until I have feedback from the Council and we develop a permanent policy. But gave the caveat that if we do run into a point where the Council doesn't believe that that's a direction we should go, that ability to work remote can come to an end fairly quickly. But I have given the green light for them to go ahead and do that now until I have further direction from you as the Council and we develop or we finalize the permanent policy going forward, so... Another concern I have for employees organization-wide, and this has been touched on a couple of times through the presentations, and that is our retirement system. Both with the change from the defined benefit to the defined contribution legislative action that the state legislature took, but also the needs and concerns with regards to public safety and retirement. I will tell you that transitioning to a public safety retirement system will not be cheap. I would be surprised if it's less than probably two to two and a half million dollars a year to make that investment. I haven't done the actual calculations, but those are two of our largest departments and two of our better-paid departments within the organization. And that will be a significant employer contribution to that if we switch to that. Not saying we shouldn't. I'm just saying be prepared for a pretty good sticker shock when it comes to that. But regardless, we need to have a pretty comprehensive conversation about the retirement benefits that we offer. Are we going to try and figure out how to do a defined benefit program? Or are we switching to a defined contribution? How are we doing that? How we do that? We already have, was it six, seven different retirement? Six different retirement accounts, so we're not real excited about creating another one. But that is a conversation that we need to have. I will tell you that we've lost at least one or two quality employees from our organization due to that change. They did not wanna switch to a defined contribution retirement system, and when the legislature took that action, they left our organization because they didn't wanna be here for that, so... Wages and raises. You know, we continue to try to be somewhat competitive with our wages. I think we've been very good to our employees over the years. So there's two different wages and raises that we potentially look at per year. One is a market adjustment. We do a survey, and Lisa talked about this in her presentation the other day. Council took action that we're gonna do that formal survey every three years. I think before that action, that directive, we're doing it every five or ten years, every ten years? Which is, you can get really out of sync and out of whack with the market waiting every ten years to go check. I will say that with a caveat, though, and that is traditionally speaking, and from what I've observed and what I've seen in my career, it's unrealistic in my opinion to believe that local government is going to compete with the best wages out there. We just cannot compete with the private sector. What we offer instead typically is stability and really good benefits. I think sometimes our employees tend to forget that. And my message, and most of the departments in here will agree, because they've heard me say this probably several times, we as a city cannot afford to pay top wages, a platinum health insurance plan, top benefits, and a top retirement system, and still have money to pay for facilities, equipment, training, and all those things all at the same time. And so we need to prioritize some of that. Again, I think our goal is to be in the ballpark, to offer fair competitive wages, but we're not gonna be at the top. We offer really good benefits, and hopefully that's enough to keep quality people coming in to work for us. With that, I do wanna pause because I meant to start out my presentation with this, and that is I hope that as you've gone the last couple of days, that you have seen the quality of our employees. We have highly intelligent, extremely passionate employees that serve this community every day and more and more take more and more abuse publicly every single day. And they put their heads down, and they do what they're passionate about, and they serve this community. Our mission statement, as was mentioned this morning, is "Neighbors building our community with pride." That language in there of neighbors building our community comes directly from our employees. They insisted that they be recognized as members of our communities and neighbors of every citizen that they serve. They work hard. They work every day. They understand the pressures of taxes and those types of things, and they try to be as frugal as they can. They try to get the biggest return on investment of the taxpayer dollars as they can. And when they come and ask for more funds, more often than not, it's only after they've exhausted every other option and alternative that they can. And more often than not, we are doing without more often to help keep that burden down. I take a great amount of pride in our employees, the work that they do, and the quality that they are. And I think Minot is fortunate to have many of these people here. Because I can tell you right now, many of these people could go into the private sector and make those top-dollar wages, and they stay here because they're passionate about what they do. Anyway, so I'll get off that soapbox. Going back to the left side here with the payroll position, one of the things that I would like to begin looking at and considering is transitioning the payroll processing from HR staff over to Finance. So if I was to add a position, I would add a payroll position. I would probably house it under Finance, begin to transition the payroll processing over to Finance, so HR can focus on some of the bigger-picture things, development of employees, training. They would still serve as the onboarding for new hires and those kinds of things. But really, once employees check in and finalize their work schedules and hours and those kinds of things, that it would be processed through HR. I do have doubts that Finance with our current staff right now, and the lengthy presentation that you had and the very comprehensive annual, daily, and monthly workload that was outlined, I do have my doubts about whether or not there is the capacity within Finance to take this on right now. And which is why I would advocate for a payroll position in Finance if we transition this over. And with the caveat that HR needs to continue to be prepared to be cross-trained, that anytime that Finance needs the expertise and the backfill, that the HR would be the backstop to Finance to help do that. Another thing that I've been thinking about here over the last several months, when I attended ICMA in Austin, I attended a present, a couple of presentations actually from some staff out of Tacoma, Washington that have developed a lean process that the City Manager's Office requires anything to go through to make sure that we're running as efficiently as we possibly can. So instead of having the solution, everything be that we need more people, is to have a lean process established that we go through that process, we diagnose the problem, we diagnose the potential solutions, and that we look for those low-hanging solutions that don't necessarily require more people, more resources if we can solve those problems more efficiently and effectively through process changes. I would like to take and identify probably five or six staff throughout the organization and develop a process to train them in that and have them be a resource to the entire organization, that as we're working through these processes and identifying these problems, that they can help facilitate those conversations throughout our organization and see if we can find ways to work more efficiently as opposed to just trying to throw more money at problems. And I would like to take at least one or two of them and send them to Tacoma, Washington and see their process, and then bring that back and help us figure out how to integrate that into our organization and roll that out as part of our process for the future. Projects. I'm gonna, I kinda approached this from the different investments that the Council has made through the Community Survey, the Housing Study, and the CPSM Studies. So Community Survey, main things that I see there and that you've heard about throughout the last couple of days, increased funding for road maintenance and repairs. I understand it's gonna be difficult to try and carve out the funds to do that, but the less we invest in that, the more expensive it comes later on down the road. Pardon the pun, maybe intended or not. But the best thing we can do is it's always cheaper to maintain properly than it is to replace. And I think Lance did a good job of demonstrating that and illustrating that this morning. So it's been one of my goals and priorities since I've been here is to continue to increase the investment. I know we're not gonna get there overnight. We've made progress here over the last few years of allocating more and more funds to that. But I would like to see us get closer to that funding recommendation, that we're maintaining quality streets, that we get rid of the backlog, and we're able to keep up with that as is expected. That's another high priority that continues to come out of the Community Survey that I think we need to focus on and continue to make a priority. Already kinda talked about code enforcement, so I won't talk anymore about that one. Public engagement is another one. That was a high priority from the citizens. I'm still trying to figure out how to do that. I'm always open to ideas. We, again, as we said earlier with the PIO presentation, we're trying to find more and more ways to engage with the public. We are building trust. We're building credibility. We're building an audience through that. But yet we still continue to get poor marks in the survey on how to do that. One of my suggestions on that, and this will take some participation from the Mayor and the Council, was I would recommend that we kinda divide the community into quarters, and we start doing regular neighborhood input sessions where we go to the neighborhoods. We don't ask them to come to City Hall. We find some way to be in their neighborhood. Maybe we give some presentations and some information on things that affect their quadrant of the community specifically, but then spend a lot of time listening to those citizens and bringing that information back to City Hall so we can begin to maybe make some progress with regards to that and helping our citizens feel like we're there, we're listening, and we're engaging. Because really, I mean, everything else we've thrown at this challenge and this issue, and this isn't the first community I've run into this challenge and issue with, aside from literally going and knocking every single door, I don't know of any other way to help people know that that information is available and how to connect. I've always learned communication is a two-way street. And we're putting material out, but for whatever reason, the public isn't willing to engage with what we're putting out. And again, I'm open to suggestions from Council on how we can do that better. And we're looking to dedicate the resources of our PIO Office to do that. Now, we, actually, when that position came vacant, you heard her say that her job title has changed. She is not a PIO anymore. She's our Public Engagement and Communication Officer. We intentionally put engagement into her job title because that's what we want her to focus on and her team. So I'm looking for ways to do that. Not to pick a scap, but I am concerned about the feedback in the survey with regards to connection with elected officials specifically, right? And it's not that I feel that our Council is doing a bad job or making the wrong decisions, but we gotta figure out some way to close that gap. And always looking for room for improvement. Out of the Housing Study, you know, they estimated that we needed about thirty-three hundred new units of living within our community to keep up with our growth projections at this point. You divide that by ten years, that's three hundred and thirty units per year. There were some recommendations and suggestions in there. But that's gonna require a philosophical, ideological, and cultural shift as a community to tackle that problem. I will say again, and this probably sounds like a broken record, Minot is not alone in facing this challenger issue. It's a little bit more compounded, I think, in Minot, and I've mentioned this a few times, too. As part of the flood project, with a number of housing units that we are acquiring and demolishing, we will remove probably twenty percent of our housing stock within our community. That most communities aren't experiencing. But the affordability, the increase of costs, the challenge of getting contractors and builders, those are common issues across the country. And if we can figure that out quicker than in other communities, we have a competitive edge that we will become a community of choice that people will wanna come live in, which will help solve your workforce issues and other challenges that you're experiencing throughout the community. So the question is, is how do we do that? So the question is, is how do we do that? I don't know that we have the answers to that, but I think we need to have some serious conversation about that going forward. One potential solution is infrastructure cost share. And the developers will tell you, uh, they cannot afford the model anymore, that they have to build the water mains, the sewer mains, the streets, the curb, the gutter, the sidewalks. And build all that into the cost of the lot. Uh, because they can't do that and keep your housing affordable at the same time. And I don't know what the balance is there, and that's something that we'll have to work as staff with you as the elected officials on what that potential balance is there. Uh, but the city may need to start picking up some of those infrastructure costs going forward to help keep some of that affordable. And I've seen it all the way to the extreme, and I doubt that Minot is to the point that they're willing to do this. But I've seen some cities even become the developer. We platted out, we put in the infrastructure and we pretty much get it buildable ready. And, uh, all the, all the builders do is they come in and buy the lot, build the house for their customer and sell it. We're running into less and less developers now that are willing to do the entire development process of taking their bare dirt and plating it and putting in the infrastructure because they are not willing to hold those costs anymore. And, uh, and then the other thing is the balance between single family versus multifamily. It's a balance between generational shifts. Uh, these younger generations, most of them are, do not have the white picket fence dream of owning a house. And they want to live downtown. They want to live in condos. They want to live near restaurants. They want to live near where they work. They don't want to own a house. They want to pay rent and have someone else take care of all the HVAC issues and the lawn mowing and, and the snow removal. They don't want to deal with that. And so, and I think we're making good progress. This is why projects like the tracks, the M building, uh, the Edgewood proposal with regards to the central garage, and these are why those projects matter. These are the projects that make our community attractive to those future generations. And helps us compete with communities that are already doing it like Fargo, Bismarck, West Fargo, Grand Forks, those kinds of things. Can we, do I expect that we're going to keep up at the pace as those communities? No. But the more we can close that gap, the less leakage we lose. Uh, the other piece here, uh, that I would, uh, finish off on this slide with is the community, the city of Minot has done a good job of investing in a lot of infrastructure in our community, which gives you the opportunity that, that infrastructure is in at yesterday's cost points versus today's, which I believe gives you a competitive advantage. So the more we can encourage infield development in places that we already have infrastructure, the better. And so I would rather focus on infield development versus trying to develop bare ground that we have to spend and figure out how to find the financial resources to extend infrastructure to. I think you have plenty of capacity here to do significant growth within this community without having to spend a significant amount of money in water, sewer, streets and those kinds of things, particularly in southwest and northwest Minot going forward. Nas will bring you significant water capacity. That will be a huge competitive advantage. Uh, you know, talking with, with Jason and Dave, you know, every time we see these costs increases, I keep reminding them. California would laugh at that. Arizona would laugh at that, and they would pay ten times more than that right now to have water. And we have the advantage that we have water pretty much at our disposal, as much as we need. And at a cost that's much more affordable, uh, than what the southwest of the country is looking at. That doesn't mean that it makes it easy for us and doesn't make those pills easy to swallow. Uh, but let's not lose the perspective that we have some great advantages here with where we're at. And that gives us a competitive advantage over the rest of the community. And watch out when those Californians figure that out, because then you'll see the growth that Montana and Idaho are seeing. Uh, CPSM, PD, I kind of already talked about this. Um, I call it CSO, whether you want to call it CRO, those are interchangeable for me. Community service officer versus a community resource officer, those are interchangeable for me. I think the more that we can, uh, take some of that workload off of our sworn officers and let them do what they're trained and sworn to do, the better. And I think we'll also run into some cost savings by doing that. Uh, because typically your civilians aren't as expensive as your sworn officers in most cases. So that's a more effective, efficient way to do that. I do believe that there is a potential need for position upgrades and restructuring. For me right now, and I've said this before to some of you. The, the facilities for the police department is my highest priority of facility within the organization. I think we're sitting fairly well. I said this last night. I think we're sitting fairly well with our new city hall, our public works facility, our fire stations, those kinds of things. Uh, I think the last one for me that's a priority that needs attention and investment is our police facility. How we do that is the challenge. That's the question. Uh, and how we do that, and I'll talk a little bit more about that here in, in an upcoming slide. Uh, the detective unit, uh, trying to figure out how we get past that backlog. How we can work more efficiently and effectively. I think the CPSM study did a good job of outlining that, that that needs some attention. Um, the facility needs and will also take care of one of my other priorities, and that is the storage and processing of, um, evidence. I would hate for our officers or executives to do all of their work, only to lose a case with an offender, uh, because of the lack of integrity of our evidence. And so I think that needs intention, attention and investment. Uh, fire, I've already talked somewhat on some of that with regards to the three new positions for safety. I think the council needs to have a deliberative conversation about whether or not, uh, uh, the cost is worth the effort of trying to transition from an ISO two to an ISO one. Um, I think that there should be some conversation of looking at an accreditation process. Uh, there is an accreditation process for both, both police and fire. But I think your fire department is probably more ready for that process than police is. And as the CPSM staff recommended, that given our software and some of those kinds of things, I think some of what accreditation would provide is already accounted for. Uh, with our use of our best practice of policies and those kinds of things, you probably don't get quite the return on investment of accreditation with the police department as you would with the fire department. But that will take some dedication of time and resources, uh, to be able to do that. Uh, I also believe that, uh, assistant chief and a fire marshal should be built back into the budget. These were positions that existed before, uh, were removed from the budgets to make room for other things, uh, that the department wanted to do and needed to do. But I don't believe that those should have ever been sacrificed, and the CPSM study recommends that those should be in, and I would recommend that that, those need to be put back in. And those will help with some of your, uh, succession planning. As, as the chief said, uh, five of six senior leadership officers will be retiring within the next five years. So putting these positions in place will begin to help address some of those succession planning issues, uh, that you have. You have a very young fire department. I think the fire department did a good job of making some cultural and operational transitions over the last several years. Uh, that came at the expense of some of your long-term people leaving. Uh, and having a very young department, but that also gives you the opportunity to train those young, uh, firefighters into the new, the new culture, the new policies, the new processes. I think we'll come out, um, stronger for that over the long run. Uh, but there will be some experience deficiency, uh, within that department for the coming probably five to 10 years until they get more experience with time. Overall trends and changes, community-wide, again, I've made the, the commitment publicly a couple of times now. Uh, to present my city manager recommended budget, uh, to the elected body, uh, with no property tax increase, and by that meaning that there, we will absorb, uh, the, um, increases in assessed values. And so my recommended budget will probably be a significant decrease to the mill levy as far as a number, uh, to do that. I will say also that comes with some significant challenges. You've just spent two days listening to more ways of how to spend money in significant amounts. And, uh, and, and for most part, that hasn't even included just the general increases of costs of the day-to-day costs of doing business. You heard over and over, our biggest cost investment is within our people. And, uh, the cost of living is going up within our community and those kinds of things. And so we haven't even talked about whether or not, or how much of a pay raise we build in and those kinds of things, and that's going to be a big, uh, cost. The other thing we haven't touched on is, uh, PTO. Uh, with the transition of that and the potential buyback every year with regards to that. This will go, this will go back to some of the conversation we had earlier within the finance with regards to budgeting fifty-eight positions, even though we're not filling all fifty-eight. Uh, right now, the methodology is, is we're expecting that we intentionally build in a hundred percent of the cost of personnel, knowing full well that we're not going to be a hundred percent staffed. We roll some of those savings in to help balance the next year's budget. But when we transition to PTO, we specifically, um, took the approach of we were going to use some of those personnel savings to help pay for that PTO benefit, uh, to staff. And, uh, the more we tighten that down means that we need to be more cognizant of that cost of the PTO buyback. The PTO system is designed intentionally to help try and minimize that. Uh, so there is a two-week minimum usage of PTO annually for employees. Uh, that is done for mental health reasons to make sure that our employees are taking some time off. Uh, but it's also done to help curb some of those potential fiscal constraints that come with that type of a benefit, uh, for the future. And, uh, we have been pushing the management team since we, we transitioned to this to, to monitor, uh, PTO scheduling and usage. And wh- what the, uh, potential overages can be so that we can manage that PTO buyback and hopefully keep it within, uh, that methodology that we've talked about. So. Uh, strategic plan development and finalization, uh, you heard, taught, heard me talk about this over the last couple of weeks. We do have a facilitator coming in. Uh, she will be here July ninth and 10th with her team. Uh, we kicked this off a couple of weeks ago with some public input sessions. And so we will have some ongoing, uh, processes with staff and elected officials. But at the end of the day, that strategic plan is the council's strategic plan. With the input of the citizens and the, and the staff, but at the end of the day, that's the council's strategic plan. Of where we're going and how we're going to get there over the next five to 10 years. So, uh, please be prepared to be ready for that. That's going to be an important piece. Uh, we've done some of the laywork with that with regards to the aspirations, the mission statement, the values, those kinds of things that we've been working on over the last couple of years. Uh, but that'll be kind of the crowning piece and will be a very important piece uh, on how this organization moves forward and what is of priority to this community and this organization. I've already talked about PD administration building, the municipal court, uh, being significant, uh, facility needs, uh, going forward. We, we've kind of briefly talked publicly a little bit about a public safety sales tax. We talked earlier today with Alderman Padraig Gula's questions about potential sales tax just to support operational costs. But we've been talking about potentially a half cent sales tax. We'll be waiting for the election results and who's our city council, and that'll be probably one of the, the immediate questions to talk about. Is, is that an alternative that we're willing to look at and ask? The, uh, the feedback in the community satisfaction survey was not very positive. Um, and that could be taken from a approach that either we need to do a lot of public education with regards to those needs. Uh, or not. Some of that is trying to capitalize off of, uh, the huge support for public safety within the public. Shoot, you just heard it last night, you know? We need more police officers and give them what they need, no matter what it costs, right? There is a demographic out there, a strong demographic out in the public that are highly supportive of public safety. And your best likelihood of any potential increase in tax revenue is probably going to come on the guys who are supporting public safety. Now, whether or not that's doable within our community now is yet to be seen. But that's your, that's your best opportunity. Uh, another one that we broached somewhat last year as part of the budget process that I want to follow through with more significant conversation on this year. Uh, state law does give us the ability to assess franchise fees. This means that any entity that has infrastructure within the city right away, the city has the ability to charge, uh, basically a tax on that. And the previous three states I've been in that has been either the second or the third highest revenue to help support operations of the organization. When I was in, uh, O'Lawa, Nebraska, a town of about forty-seven hundred people. I think we got probably four or five hundred thousand dollars a year in franchise fee revenues. Uh, when I was in Knoxville, Iowa, a town of about seventy-four hundred people. Uh, we were about, uh, nine hundred thousand to a million dollars a year. Uh, in Warrensburg, Missouri, town of about twenty-five thousand people, we were getting about one point two to one point four million dollars a year in franchise fee revenues. The city of Minot, pushing fifty thousand people, gets between three and four hundred thousand dollars a year in franchise revenues. We have one organization that we make pay franchise fees. One, I think that's an unfair competitive advantage for those utilities and those entities, uh, particularly for the one that's paying it. Um, and two is it's a potential financial resource that we have not tapped into that is not uncommon, uh, across the country. And can potentially be a significant revenue generator. I haven't done any calculations. It'll be hard to calculate out because you haven't really implemented it. Uh, but I've tasked, uh, Tom, our assistant city manager, to work with finance to do some research on this for part of our budget processes this year to look at it. As far as what's allowed by federal law, what's allowed by state law, and then what our current ordinances say. But I would estimate that there is no reason that you shouldn't be receiving probably two to two and a half million dollars a year in revenue as opposed to three or four hundred thousand dollars a year in revenue uh, off of that methodology. Uh, the state gives you the authority to do it. We just haven't tapped into it. Another significant concern I have is what you saw this afternoon with regards to the airport facility. I will tell you that, uh, my, my approach to these types of things is my job, I don't. I'm not going to spend a lot of time and resources trying to go back and figure out how we got to the problem that we have today. My job is to help you figure out how to fix the problem and how to keep that problem from reoccurring in the future. And so that's what I focus on. Uh, we have significant needs to invest, uh, from a maintenance standpoint, uh, within that facility. It's going to come with a pretty good price tag to do some of that, uh, but I think that's needed. That's our front, one of our front doors to our community. One of your first impressions, and, uh, I don't think that the community is going to be very happy if we're not able to continue to offer a quality airport. Uh, although some would argue that there's a lot of them driving to Bismarck to get on a plane because they get cheaper plane tickets, but, uh, that airport is busy. And, uh, and we are seeing interest from carriers of adding additional flights out of there. And if we're going to continue to have that progress, we need to make the appropriate investments and make sure that we're maintaining the investment that the community has already made there. Now, the good news with regards to the airport outside of the facility, you know, we talked about, uh, the, the runways and some of those issues. Uh, there is no better federal funding available than there is for airports. It's usually ninety-ten, ninety-five-five. Where the federal government covers up, covers a large portion of those costs. Uh, but it's a process to get it, and it requires a lot of significant amount of work. Uh, continuing to work with the FAA and those guys to, to keep them, keep that money coming and keep us high on the priority list. But that's a high priority need for me. Uh, identifying and power organizational efficiencies. Uh, this kind of goes back a little bit to that lean processing that I talked about, uh, earlier. I hope that you saw today that some of the efficiencies that we're gaining are coming from our employees. I want to, to continue to encourage, uh, my management team to enable and empower our employees to bring those ideas forward. You know, uh, the work at the airport with the, the dormicaba and, uh, uh, the service animal. Uh, you saw it on at Public Works with John Reynolds' ideas with regards to the hydro excavator. And, uh, the ability to put a sleeve on a camera and we can fix, uh, you know, a problem pipe for less than a thousand dollars versus spending, you know, twelve, fifteen thousand dollars to dig that up. Those are the types of ideas that we need to continue to encourage within our organization to improve efficiency. Because that's where we're going to find the greatest momentum forward of absorbing these increases in costs without going to the taxpayer's pocket to pay for those. So I want to find ways to continue to encourage that. Uh, Nas and flood control, uh, continue to be a significant investment of this community. And I can tell you right now, this is, these two projects are some of your bottleneck financially as a community. Most communities are looking for water resources. That continues to be a challenge and a problem, uh, throughout the country. So that one's not uncommon. Flood control is uncommon. I would say probably ninety, ninety-five percent of your communities across the country are not worried about flood control. They're worried about stormwater. They're worried about stormwater and stormwater runoff, but most of them aren't worried about flood control. And the financial commitment and that this community is making into that while necessary. Uh, hamstrings this community financially. You know, we just got done talking a lot about how much of our sales tax goes towards flood control. If I could take that eighty, eighty cents per two pennies and invest that into streets. Into our airport, into our staff and those kinds of things. Uh, we could get some really big return on investment for our community for, for that money. But right now, it's invested as it should be uh, within flood control, but I think because we've been talking about flood control so long. That there's this um. What's the terminology I'm looking for? Uh, there's a fatigue to it, right? We're ready to move on to something else more exciting. But unfortunately, flood control is gonna be a conversation and a piece financially of this community for the next twenty to twenty-five years. There's no getting around that, right? NOS fortunately is coming to an end, hopefully here in the near future. Um, so we'll have some relief there. But uh, flood control continues to be a bottleneck financially for this community. And we need to continually remind and educate our public. Of that is an investment that we're making in our community and a needed investment. You heard about lead pipes today, you heard about cast iron, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on that. Uh, snow routes, ordinances, you know, I would like to update the ordinance. I would like to get to an ordinance where we identify a snow event and a snow emergency. That uh, for efficiency purposes that we can get uh, the public off of streets and out of the way. So that our staff can get uh, through streets quicker and faster. Uh, I would like to put up more, we need to, what was the number, Lance, oh Lance left. I got a number last year, so divorce the snow routes, well, in order to enforce the snow routes, we have to properly signage it. And we're looking at probably about forty thousand dollars just in signage costs, just to buy the signs. And then depending on whether or not we have staff do it or we. Contact out the installation of that, that's probably another fifty thousand dollars if we wanna get that up. But it's kinda hard to enforce an ordinance that isn't properly signed. So, uh, that will be something that I'll be looking at potentially trying to build into the budget. Aside from just trying to figure out efficiencies on how we get to the residential neighborhoods more quickly. Uh, ordinances as far as. Uh, getting, getting cars and vehicles off of, of the streets so that we can plow quickly without them in the way. Um, and having them properly signed, so we can enforce those ordinances will be uh, kind of the first phase. Uh, the last couple of years, what we've been trying to do is we've been trying to get our own house in order and that we're leading by example. And we are getting snow off of our city-owned and responsibility of sidewalks. Uh, and we're spending the tune of almost quarter of a million dollars a year uh, to contract that out. Uh, the reason we did that is our goal and our approach was to dedicate as much of our street staff to cleaning streets and not cleaning sidewalks. Uh, we under, we have, we're a very pedestrian-friendly community. We have a lot of citizens within our community that rely on the ability to walk even in the winter time to get around. And uh, we found it more cost-effective to contract that out. And save our staff resources and equipment for focusing on streets and alleys uh, throughout the community, so. Um, and I will echo, uh, Dave stole some of my thunder here about an hour ago, uh, with regards to a budget amendments. More and more of these budget costs need to be pushed into the budget process versus being brought outside of the budget process of purchasing high-dollar equipment. Pieces of property, adding or upgrading positions uh, within the organization outside of the budget process. Uh, we as staff need to do a better job of looking ahead to the future. And anticipating those costs and those needs and building it into the conversation as part of the budget process. It will never be perfect, we will have emergencies come up that we have to address those, but I think. Many of the things that uh, we have done budget amendments for over the last several months. Should have been streamlined into the budget process. So that's where I'm going to step forward as a city manager, and I'll give you a warning now. I probably will not be the most popular guy over the next several months, either internal or external to the organization because I am going to hold the line budgetarily. On some of these issues. You've heard a lot of needs, we do not have the funds to address all of the needs, which means I have to help. Do my job in helping you as a council prioritize these needs. Uh, which means I might have to tell no to some people internally and externally, and that is not gonna make me popular. But that's what you paid me the big bucks for, that's what I'm here for, I can handle that. Uh, but I probably won't be talked about very favorably uh, internally and externally as I, as, as we go through those processes. Uh, I look at this as um, if you use a gardening metaphor. Uh, we've seen a lot of growth in our garden, this year and next year is gonna be a pruning year. Uh, we're gonna have to do some pruning. Over time, that will generate a better fruit and a better quality going forward. Uh, but we're gonna have to go through the pain of doing some pruning here for a couple of years, and that's my approach, that's my methodology. Uh, I have been hesitant in previous years in budgets to take away the alternative of the council to. Not raise the mill levy, uh, but again, my commitment this year is to. To some degree, I can't fully take that away from the council, I can present a, a recommended city manager budget. You can choose to go against that and go balance a budget that uh, raises the mill levy if you want. Uh, but I'm not building that cushion in this year. So, we're gonna have some tough conversations of things that we as a management staff are gonna have to do, uh, to balance that budget. Um, and I think you've gotten an inkling of how difficult that's going to be here over the last couple of days. And Dave and I are gonna be the, kinda leading uh, that charge of holding the line and being the bad guys, it's not that we don't believe that these things aren't needed. This is that Dave and I understand that we can't afford to do it. And we can't afford to go and ask the public to give us more money out of their pockets to help accomplish this, so. Uh, we're gonna have to be more creative, we're gonna have to find more efficiencies, we're gonna have to use more duct tape. Um, we're gonna have to find more ways of doing without and, and prioritizing and. Uh, there may be some things that we may have to find some things that. The public has gotten used to us doing, that we just can't afford to do anymore and we're gonna just have to cut out of the budget. I don't know what those are right now. Um, and that'll be a conversation with my management team and those kinds of things. Uh, I always somewhat jokingly, but more seriously than joking, tell people all the time. I don't know how many meetings I've sat in my career over the last fifteen years of trying to figure out ways to cut budget that I haven't come out of those meetings with more ways to spend money. I can go in a meeting trying to find a way to cut half a million dollars and I come out with ways to spend two million more dollars, right? Because every time you look at something, it's, well, that's important, that's, in fact, we need to put more money into that. And so not only should we not cut that, we need to put more money and investment into that and. Uh, to some extent, that's kinda, kinda what we're seeing, this isn't uncommon. Uh, but Dave and I are taking the approach this year that we are holding the line and we are pruning this year. And we are going to push this organization to do without more. Uh, because we can't just add positions and throw more money at things. Uh, we need to be more intelligent, we need to invest money that creates efficiencies for us going forward. And we're going to hold that line, and again, it's not that because we don't believe that. Such and such department doesn't need that position or those kinds of things. It's, it's just that at the end of the day, we can't afford to do it. Uh, the analogy I use all the time, and Dave and I will work on a revenue uh, projection. Uh, presentation for the council in an open public session. At the end of the day, what I look at that is, is when we set those revenue projections, that's how, that's how big of a pie we have. You can cut that pie into whatever size slices that you want, you can give someone a bigger slice and someone else a smaller size, but at the end of the day, the pie is the same size. That pie is our revenues. We already made the commitment that we're gonna hold flat on property tax, so that, that piece of the pie is not gonna get any bigger. Uh, looking at sales tax projections and those kinds of things, that piece of the pie is not gonna get any bigger. Looking at hub city funding, that piece of the pie is not gonna get any bigger, best case scenario is the pie stays the same size and doesn't shrink. And we have to figure out how to meet all the needs of the organization. And offer quality services to our public while the pie is not getting any bigger. And that's our, that's our challenge, that's our mantra. Uh, I'm confident in my management staff that we will work hard and we will do that. And we will, we will do that difficult work and we hope that we have the support of the council going forward. That when we're making some of those unpopular decisions, uh, that we have your support to hold the line on that going forward, so. Uh, with that, I will open up for any questions that you as the council have.
Sorry, this is just one issue of a big that you just said there. Um, you talked about obviously the city wanting to get our, our own street sidewalks in order when it comes to snow removal. Uh, one of the problems that we've ongoing had is that other private areas are not, including sometimes even business areas. Um, if we explore, and I think I've talked about this before, but is there a process for us using some sort of a nuanced ordinance? As uh, just like we would with, with, with grass to actually. Go in and do that and charge the person for that or to have a contractor go in and do that?
Yeah, the approach has been, um. The approach that the staff is trying to take is, so this is an area, again, we have, we've been. Non-proactive in enforcement of codes uh, in this area for, for a long time. So to go from zero to sixty overnight is probably not a good idea. Our, our goal this last year was to use this last winter as an education process to tell, well, one, get our, get our, our house in order. Our city, cause the first thing you hear is, well, you're gonna come tell me to clear snow off of my, off of my sidewalk, but the city. Has miles of sidewalk with snow on it, why are you coming to knocking on my door when you haven't even cleared your own sidewalk? So we've tried to take that argument off the table, the other one is putting up the signage. And then, and then start doing enforcement and use this first year as an education component, well, we're not necessarily going out and writing tickets. What we're doing is we're going out and using our social media and our code enforcement officers to go out and do an education campaign of saying, hey. This is what the ordinance says, I'm not writing you a ticket today, but this is your responsibility. And in the future, when, if I have to come back, uh, there may be. Uh, some tickets and some fines associated with it, so we're trying to ease into that. Um, unfortunately, this last winter was a very mild winter, we didn't have a lot of education opportunity uh, through this last winter to be able to do that, so. But in the, in the, at the end of the day, yes, I do believe that we have the abilities that uh, if needed. Uh, we could send a contractor out or we could send staff out to clear the snow off. And then bill the property owner for that, but that becomes very cumbersome and um. I'm sure Dave can give you a very eloquent answer of all the complexities and the risks associated with that. And we try to avoid that as much as possible for all the reasons that Dave can give you.
Well, and I, I understand everything you're saying, you're right that our year of education not being a year without a whole lot of snow, so that made it a little bit harder and. You kinda push it down and, and you know, the, the, the carrot is of course, you know, hey, do this and you don't get fined, hey, do this, people can walk here neighborhood, it looks better than everything else. But at some point, as I said, that stick, which is, I mean, even there's gonna, I take one business downtown here that. Honestly, I know, I know they didn't have money to hire, sorry, they couldn't find anybody to hire to do it, but at some point. It's an eyesore and it's, it's a problem with how folks move around town, so.
True.
It'd be nice to come, and that was not this winter, to be fair, that was previous winters when we had actually, you know, lots of snow.
And I'll give a caveat and a warning, I've been known this few times, so the, the issue with code enforcement is not uncommon, I've had this come up in. Pretty much every community satisfaction survey I've done in every community that I've been in, it always comes up that they want better code enforcement. Which always works when you want me to go knock on your neighbor's door, it doesn't work so well when I knock on your door, right? And so this, this is one of those things, you have to be careful what you ask for, you want us to increase code enforcement, which is fine when we're knocking on your neighbor's door, but you don't like it when we knock on your door.
Yeah, stay away from my door.
Yeah.
Steve?
Yeah, uh, um, major comment and eleven specific questions for comments on which I'll put later. Um, major comment is, this is fourteen, fifteen, sixteen comment been through this. And this is the most clear-eyed, honest and sophisticated perspective I've seen on the budget. From the city manager ever. This is in the league by itself and I wanted to publicly compliment you here. I agree with most of you, what you're saying, I disagree with some things, other things I'm warm on, but I think the quality that I see here is far above what we've had in the past. Um, so I wanted to compliment you on that. Um, in terms of just specific uh, comments, um, one is this issue of accreditation. Um, I don't know what other departments, uh, what other activities are subject to accreditation, but. I should probably let you know about this earlier, I had an hour and a half long conversation with the president of the consulting company. Before the report came out, I hadn't seen the report. And I asked him that specific question, should we go for accreditation, and he said, yes, definitely for both departments. Now, he didn't have the results at that point yet to, to say that the fire department is ready, or I think you're right on that. But his feeling was that it absolutely should go for that, that offers you protection and gives them a chance to look at themselves more carefully. And develop more plans and ideas, and I think that's a more general issue, uh, I don't know if the water line has to be credited or what, but that's something I think the, the. Council something that we'll have to face, I know many, uh, board by education are the quote, for example. Uh, mandates and if you're gonna be running a program in some area like social work, whatever, if accreditation's available, you have to seek it. If you don't have, there aren't good excuses, there aren't good reasons why you're not doing it, so I think that's a, the quality control issue that we need to look at some point. But I did wanna let you know that, and I was surprised that the, the local representatives said that they didn't feel it was a big deal, uh, at least not for police. Um, that, that's the opposite of what I heard from the president of the company, but again, maybe.
True.
Um, the second comment or question I guess is, um, you're, one of the things we're doing in, in HR is we're automating a lot of processes and. Basically gave us like, you know, budget estimate, how much money to save from people, come ahead and take your own, uh, data and change it. Um, what's justification in view of that trend for another payroll position? People trying to automate it?
Well, it comes to checks and balances in my mind, so with some of the uh. Some of the transition, some of this was based off of software and those kinds of things, the transition to PTO, those kinds of things. We had a lot of internal watchdogs looking at payroll and those kinds of things, and one of my responses to that was to have our internal auditor. Come and do an internal audit of, of those processes with regards to payroll to make sure that we were. Processing payrolls accurately, last thing I wanna do is not compensate an employee for what they've worked appropriately. I also wanted to provide some protection to HR, uh, who's been under some fire here recently with a lot of employees across the organization. Uh, to justify that the problems and issues that we were experiencing was not the fault of HR. But one of the findings that came out of that was a lack of cross-training and duplication of training uh, within the HR department. We have primarily one person in HR that's doing a lot of the payroll. And if that person isn't, you know, I call it my, my semi-truck theory. If that employee walks out and gets hit by a semi-truck and is no longer available to me, who do I have as a backup? To be prepared to do that important function of payroll. Uh, the second uh, aspect of that, uh, for me that's important is, not that it has to be this way. Uh, but uh, finance is really good about processing money. And one of our most expensive payments to process on a regular basis is payroll. And so most organizations that I've been a part of, uh, payroll has been processed by finance. And again, it comes back to reallocating resources, it's not that I don't think that payroll does a, or not, not that I think that. HR does a good job of processing payroll. I just have different priorities that I would like pri- uh, HR to focus on than processing payroll and stopping everything every two weeks. And dealing with that. I want HR to focus on mental health, employee wellness, benefits, helping us train our employees to be better supervisors. Um, those kinds of things, uh, to take our organization to a new level that HR just doesn't have. Uh, the capacity to do right now. And so rebalancing that workload in my opinion. Giving finance a, a workload that they can probably process better than any other department within the organization in my mind just makes sense.
So you think we need to have tighter oversight and then regardless of our attempt to automate this?
At the end of the day, payroll should just be a simple input-output.
Can I think of just a general comment?
Sure.
Just, um, just from a standpoint of most, um, HR departments in the state, um, the only other department that processes payroll is Bismarck. Which processes their own, now that doesn't mean that HR isn't involved in the payroll aspect, but they're involved in the timekeeping portion of it. So they're involved in making sure that you accurately put the right pay codes in, but not actually pushing the button to handle the money. So that's generally what most.
Yeah, I do wanna briefly, I'm gonna change topics off of the payroll so we can come back to it if you want, but I wanna circle back to the accreditation question, cause I wanna make two points there. The reason I think accreditation is important, and the first and the big one for me is. That demonstrates to our public that we're providing the best public safety services that we can, we're doing it in accordance with best practices. Compared to the nation, we are doing the best, and again, it goes back to the comment I made earlier that. Two of our core services we provide is police and fire. So I wanna make sure that we're providing the best services that we possibly can to our community, to our citizens in those two areas. Accreditations help verify that we are doing that, from a policy standpoint, from a processing standpoint, from a training standpoint. All of that together, we, I want to provide the best police and fire department that we possibly can to the citizens of Minot. Second is the protection that comes with that. If you're gonna put up police. If you're gonna put a police officer in this, or a firefighter on a stand in a court setting and they ask, why do you have that policy? Why did you make that decision? When you can make the answer of, because we're an accredited, uh, organization and we're using the best practice policies that is vetted by experts from across the country, that gives us legitimacy in that courtroom and makes it difficult to point the finger that the city made a mistake. And then somebody gets off because of that.
Absolutely.
Right? So those are the two main reasons why I think accreditation is important. For me, it's not the gold star that, oh, we're accredited and we're better than fifteen percent of the rest of the country. It's because we're the best and it provides us that credibility where we need that credibility.
Exactly. Um, next point I guess I would make is that, um, you, you saw a good example, and we've talked about this before and it's hard to implement this in the service system, but I really think we need to have some incentives and incentives structured building for better employee performance. We saw a good example of that this afternoon when at the airport, the airport director told us about how she struck a good deal for these exit gates. Um, there should be a way of, of recognizing that kind of money-saving alternative. I mean, a, a plaque every five or ten or fifteen years is a good start and that's great. Certainly having a recognition picnic and stuff, a good start. But I think we need to really be looking at more concrete ways of rewarding people, particularly financially. Uh, maybe a promotion, maybe some extra consideration when it comes to the budget, like if the, if a truck driver saves money, maybe we, we upgrade the quality of the seat on the truck he drives or something like that. But I think offering incentives for performance generally is a, is a good idea. Um, so just something, again, risk for the mill. Um, I have been going to a lot of, um, organizational management presentations by some of the leaders in, in the field. And I went to a week-long conference in Washington last August and I ended up, it was, it was for psychology, but I ended up mostly going to organizational stuff. And I think what you're talking about really fits in how I see the field as represented by these, you know, world-class people. And one of the things they emphasized in the, in the presentations I went to, um, and I'm, I should ask for reimbursement, because it's most, most city-related stuff that I went through, not, not personal stuff. But, um, the, the joke, of course, but, um, one of the things they emphasized was that employee engagement is really a big deal. That people need to feel like a part of the process. They need to feel like they're part of something bigger, something more significant. And that's probably the key factor. It isn't money as much anymore. I mean, sure, quality of life is very important and that's a big part of it. But the sense of being part of something bigger, something more important, that that really is a major motivating factor. And that's a major factor in what differentiates successful from unsuccessful organizations. So I think the kind of stuff you're saying would very much be supported by my reading of the current state of the organizational psychology and management literature. Um, and, you know, in terms of, uh, in terms of employee satisfaction, um, I think the, the more contemporary term would be employee engagement. I personally don't care if they're satisfied. I mean, it's a job. I mean, if they're satisfied, great. I mean, I do care if they're satisfied. But, you know, to me, the important thing is, are you part of this? Do you, like, you know, what we saw with Jennifer today, that she went out of her way to solve a problem and to save us money and to improve the process. And that's the kind of stuff we're looking for. And we can identify people like that systematically. And I think we need to, when we find them, like you're talking about, you have dozens, we need to nurture them and they can have very powerful effect. So this, the engagement with the organization is much more important than even morale, or although they're very related, or, or satisfaction. Uh, like I say, satisfaction is their happiness, it's not really trivial. It's how, how much you feel a part of this greater whole, it's critical. Um, a couple of other things, um, I'd like to see us, and again, like you say, there's so many worthy, worthy ends for our finances. I'd like to see us look at developing more of a management training program. Uh, Lisa and I have talked about that. We had this, um, start with the employee engagement survey with two finance professors. And I think that's part of it. Part of it is like the training our people from, at all levels, starting with the, with the supervisor, foreman, all the way through department head of, of thinking in a more detached, more sophisticated, more polished manner and giving them some formal tools. Um, I, I would emphasize that. Now, whether we partner up with League of Cities or Bismarck or whatever, um, or, I don't know if we have enough people on our own to develop kind of a career ladder or a certificate saying, you've completed fourteen hours of, you know, management training. Um, but I, I'd like to see that done because I think you're right. We do have very dedicated employees and I'd like to see us build up their skills so they can think again at a higher level, uh, and, 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 and work more productively and proactively within their work units. So for me, that would be a priority. Um, I'm trying to think here, uh, duh, 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 duh. One of the things I think we need to look at is administrative kind of structure and I'm glad we hired, uh, an assistant city manager. But to be very frank, I, I, I think we need to look at the structure of the management team. I, I just don't know how you can supervise seventeen people. Um, you know, it's nothing personal, but, you know, the normal literature would say span of control is five. Once you get much beyond that, you lose track of what they're doing. And I'd like to see you, this is my personal idea, more of a facilitating role. And I think if you can delegate, and we've talked about this before, and the council's talked about this, is to delegate as much as you can to the line staff and their supervisors and their managers to free people like you with the department heads up for something. And this may sound very, very radical, but I'd like to have each department head take an afternoon off once a month. Just close the door and turn on the radio, stare out the window, read a journal, call one of their colleagues, get on some internet, uh, list or whatever, and, and do that higher level thinking of where are we, what do we need to be doing, where should we be going? You know, maybe the afternoon should be spent driving around a truck with one other staff. But I, I don't, maybe it's happening, but I don't see it. And I think there'd be tremendous dividends if we sit, look to people, to people, look, you need to spend some time stepping back and looking at the bigger picture. And we want you to, we expect you to do that. Um, and again, formal training and, and certain techniques to, to help, better perspective and help develop their, their leadership and human relations skills, I think could be part of that. So those are just some of the ideas I'm coming up with. For me, I guess the focus would be on how do we make better use of the dedicated, hardworking people we have? I think there's a lot of that potential here, which could lead to greater efficiencies, you know, saving money, et cetera, et cetera. But those are the kind of, the ideas that I have, my, my reaction to what you're saying. I, I would totally endorse this from my professional standpoint, um, you know, with a couple of minor exceptions. And, and I think it fits in with where, you know, the field of organizational functioning is at right now, probably where it's heading. So I, I would give your ideas a big stand of approval as far as I know about them.
Thanks.
Any, anything from the candidates?
Yeah, I just, um, I, I wanna thank you for your presentation, Harold. And whether I would be on the, elected to the council or I am a citizen, I would stand behind you one hundred percent on the budget process. If that's, um, if you stand by that. Because, and I would take some of the arrows with me. Um, the one thing that I just wanted to mention about public engagement and, um, I've addressed the council several times. And I think staff has to realize this too, but it's not personal. It's just what a lot of us believe that we see in the city. So it's not personal. I know that we're all people and we can disagree and that's fine. But, um, Steve said something that I, I absolutely agree with. And that's that, um, people have to be accepted as part of the process. They have to have ownership. And I think that's what the citizens want and I think that's what staff wants and the city wants. And somehow we need to bring that together. And I do think this process of the budgeting is gonna help that. I just really do, but, so the, the engagement part, I just think, um, one of the, one of the things I just, I thought of is code enforcement. We wanna get a code enforcement person. What does code mean? What does it mean to you, Harold? What's the code enforcement?
Well, code enforcement means a lot of different things. It's, um, and this may even require some more, uh, digging on our part as a city to try and figure out what the citizens are telling with regards to this.
Yeah.
Right? Um, but when I hear code enforcement, what we're interpreting from the survey is we're not going out and making people mow their lawns and pick up their trash and get their junk cars off, you know, those kinds of things. Uh, but one of the things that came out of the strategic planning session with our consultant, uh, that was a little different perspective for me is maybe that's the citizens telling us that we have too many restrictions in code.
And I, I think it's all of that.
Right? And, and it could be any of that. And so unfortunately, we just have some really general questions in the survey. And they're designed to be comparable to communities across the country so we can kinda compare ourselves a little bit. But that doesn't help us get down into some of the nitty-gritty. And then we're also trying to balance and make sure that, I mean, we're already pushing the brink of how long of a survey we can put out that people have the attention span to sit and fill out. It's already a pretty long survey. So that makes it difficult for us to get down in this detail and this may be some follow-through. And the other thing that Tom and I have talked about too is I wanna be able to go look at the survey results, particularly with regards to code enforcement, uh, and put that on a GIS map layer so that we can go and see is, or, so are we seeing this in northwest Minot? Are we seeing it in southwest Minot? Are we seeing it across the entire, you know? So we, again, we can go have those conversations with these neighborhoods and come back and say, hey, we had a high concentration of dissatisfaction. Explain that to us a little bit. What do you mean when you say you're dissatisfied with that? We wanna listen to, to what you mean and what you say so we can make sure that we're not misinterpreting. You know, we're putting in solutions in place that aren't fixing the problem that you're telling us is a problem.
Yeah, 'cause there, there's a wide range.
Right.
I, I actually do code enforcement.
Yeah, it could be our plumbing codes, our building codes.
So when I look, when it said code enforcement, I'm looking at building code, plumbing code. I'm not looking at ordinance code. That, you know, that didn't even trip my trigger. And a lot of other people that I talked to, it's the same thing. It wasn't, they didn't go to mowing lawns and weeds and all that. It was, you know, the building part of it, so that.
And I agree, that probably, that probably merits some more conversation and some more, uh, research and meriting out to make sure that we're not identifying the wrong problem and we identify the wrong problem, we put the wrong solution, we put the wrong limited resources to that problem, right?
Well, and, and I, I actually said this to Harold yesterday, kind of along those same lines. You know, when the chief talked about, okay, I'm gonna, you know, we're gonna get in, get more involved in, um, you know, code enforcement, like from the fire standpoint. I mean, I don't know what that is. Um, but when I saw that in the survey, I thought about, um, you know, weeds, trashy lots, that kinda stuff. 'Cause that's what I get the calls on. It's stuff that people can see and it's stuff, it's stuff that gets in their face, just like when you drive down the, down the road and hit a truck hole. That registers. So I don't, I, I think we need to find out what we're really after there instead of just spitballing it and assuming. 'Cause I, I don't think, I don't think that's a good, good approach.
You know, I've always said, if you want your neighbors to know your ordinances of the city, just become the mayor.
Mike, can you have?
Yeah, I, I'm hoping that whether it's the city manager or one of you that have been in council a long time, you need to be a short history lesson. Um, Lisa, I think in your presentation yesterday, you've mentioned, um, twenty twelve, we were about three hundred and twenty-seven employees. I think, I think that was the number. Today, we're sitting, uh, four sixty-ish. So, so help me, were we, in your guys' minds, were we woefully understaffed in twenty twelve? Where, you know, the hundred and thirty-ish that we've added? I, I'd just really like to understand where did that, where did they go? Did we, did we bring on something that's completely different? Did the water plant go from four to thirty-eight in its current iteration? A little history lesson, if, if there's a, if there's an appetite to do that quickly.
I'll let Lisa take first stab at.
I can tell you that, um, the majority of those, like in the first couple of years, was mostly like street departments, utilities, that area had a significant.
So as the city grew, we really were?
Yes, as the city grew, we had all this infrastructure that we had behind the city.
And we got behind maybe in hiding, okay?
Yep, exactly. Um, with that, of course, population, they increased, we've increased firefighters, we've increased police officers as well. Um, not so much, a little bit on the support staff, but not significantly, but mostly it's because of the infrastructure.
Okay. So by, because by two thousand and twelve, a lot of the population had already happened. And that's why I was wondering if we actually were behind. That's what it feels like must have happened?
Yeah, it's just that, but we had so many different developments that came online that we didn't have the staff to handle streets or water or, I mean, it was, they were woefully under, understaffed.
Yeah, and just.
I re, I mean, there were a couple of things. One, you know, during the boom, we had trouble, you know, you couldn't hardly hire people. Then the flood happened. Then, you know, there, there was all the scrambling like an anthill, you know, and, you know, you couldn't, couldn't find electricity. I mean, all that stuff was going on. And then I think we, you know, if you look at, if you look at the footprint of the city, the, in the boom time, the amount of land that additional landmass that we took over that was annexed that we were responsible for, we had to catch up. And there was, there was a need to deal with that.
Yeah, well, we didn't have inspectors. I mean, we were very, we were very understaffed.
Yeah, and, and because where my mind goes is, uh, engineering background, so I know ratios, right? So I look at, okay, what do populations look like with staff and, and those aren't perfect, we, we know that. But the point is just to look at other cities in the state, 'cause that's kind of the data you provided as well, is help understand those ratios. And at that time, it looks like, yeah, we were very low in a staff to population ratio. But now it feels like we flipped the other way a little. Not, not completely. It's not like it's out of hand, but we are now among the better numbers and maybe that's good. I mean, maybe we're right-sized and we're in the exact right spot. So I just wanna make sure I got a little bit of that history from those of you that have, had been through it and knew it, so.
From my take, I would agree with what you said. I guess the, the other comment I'd make, um, again, I go back farther in the city, back to nineteen ninety-eight. And what we, what we had there, part of the difference, I think, is that city staff have become more open about what they think they need and what they want. And I think they've had more courage and developed more trust in the leadership. Um, you know, in the past, department heads were instructed not to, not to talk about what they wanted or didn't. It was a very clear thing. I've had several department heads over the years come in and say, look, they told me not to say anything. And if I did, I was afraid I'd be fired. And that was the atmosphere. And I think it takes time to change that kind of a negative message and it's changed over time. So staff are saying, hey, look, you know, we could do better with this or we need that. And the council is starting to listen and I think we've, we've become receptive to what we're hearing and we, you know, we take it seriously. Um, you know, and we try to balance all these needs, but, but I, I, I think we're hearing more about what the needs are, what the staff sees those needs. And I think we're trying to be responsive.
And I would just add on there, I mean, the, the whole budgeting process for New York the last fourteen years has changed dramatically too. Where we were just handed a budget, you know, late July, early August and said, here it is. And we just started circling things that we could cut and personnel were easy to cut. You know, we didn't know what the departments needed because we didn't have this open dialogue. We didn't have all of this information, so it's like, well, okay, we'll take two off here, we'll take four off. And so I think now we have a better idea of what the real needs are.
There was no other reason for that.
No, I'll stay here, just a couple of points. So first of all, and, and some of this, I mean, I'm glad to hear some of this 'cause I've intentionally tried to change some of this. So I always think it's a, it's important, uh, to, to give the organization an ability to, to think outside the box. Right? And so this, we're, we're early into the budget process and it's kinda like a funnel process. And I wanna leave it, I mean, pretty unfiltered at this point. Right? So really, I gave the department heads, you know, you saw multiple different ways of presenting budgets and those kinds of things, um, and fairly unfiltered. You know, I gave them the three questions. What'd you do with last year's budget? What are you doing with this year's budget? What do you need for next year's budget? And I don't sit down with the department heads beforehand and say, okay, what are you asking for the budget? Nope, don't ask for that, don't ask for that. I want the council and the community to hear all the ideas, all the needs, all the wants. We have plenty of time here over the next couple of months to filter that down. You know, determining how big of a pie piece we're cutting and, and investing here and there and those kinds of, we have plenty of time to do that. But I think it's important that you as the council and the public hears these ideas, hears these needs. And the other thing too that it does is it provides the, the staff the opportunity to bring those ideas like a hydro excavator and those kinds of things forward because they know that it'll be listened to by management. And if it makes sense, we're gonna put the resources behind to do that. Right? And so, um, I think that's an important piece of the process. So intentionally, this beginning part of the budget process is very unfiltered. And we'll become more filtered as we get closer to those recommended budgets. And I'll do a lot of that work with the management team of filtering that down, bringing it to the council, then you guys will do your final tweaks. Right? The other point I would make is back to your original question with regards to staff. And I'll say the same thing that I said to the council, uh, in my first recommended budget, uh, with regards to supporting, uh, the ask for more staff and additional resources. And the, uh, the example I used was, uh, looking at your RPM meter on your dashboard in your car. We're moving down the road at sixty-five miles an hour and, and we're going. But man, we're pushing that red on how many RPMs we're doing per minute, which isn't healthy over the long term for the car. So we've added some positions, we've added some more horsepower to the organization to get that down into a more manageable, more healthy level to push the organization forward. Um, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not easy to convince to add a new position in a lot of cases. But if it's justified and it's needed and the workload is showing that we need that, I'll be a big supporter for that. Now, the final point I'll make is, and I'll use a kind of another weird analogy, and that is looking at. And that is looking at the leanness of the organization. There may be some people out there who believe that we're seventy-thirty or seventy-five-twenty-five, uh, ground beef out there. Uh, but when I look at it, I think we're probably closer to ninety-ten. This is a fairly lean organization and I hope we gave you good examples today of how we really, you know, try to run as lean as we possibly can. Am I gonna say that there's no fat out there? No. I, is there some potential room to cut? I think Dave and I would both agree that we have some ideas of where maybe some, some resources could be freed up to meet other needs. But ninety-ten is still pretty dang good. And really, the pressures that we've had politically, uh, and not just Minot, but every local government over the last several years, and it's, and it started way back with, uh, the housing bubble pop. We have been pushed to become more and more efficient as a local government, uh, for the last couple of decades. And we've squeezed a lot of that fat out. And when we get to the point of talking about trimming and cutting, you know, we're gonna be cutting muscle tissue, we're gonna be cutting services, those kinds of things. Because we are running fairly efficiently across the rest of the organization and that's what that means. And maybe that needs to happen, right? Maybe there are some things that, uh, the citizens have relied on government to do that maybe we shouldn't be doing anymore, right? I'm not opposed to those conversations. Uh, but there are some out there that expect us to provide those services. And for every one that comes and says we shouldn't be doing that, there may be one or two that say that we should be doing that and we'll fight tooth and nail for that. And so, and that's the balance that, that we try to play, uh, through this budget process. Which again, is why last night I said, you know, this is one of the most important public engagement processes we will go through throughout the year. And we keep begging the public to come join us. But again, we talk to empty rooms, you know, and again, I'm open to ideas on how we can engage that public. But aside from going and knocking on everybody's door and talking about what we're doing in budget and what our decisions we're making, I, I don't know how to, to engage, right? So.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could just.
Yep, go ahead.
The, the, I, I just wanna continue on that because one of the things, as coming in as someone from the public who's gotten engaged over the last couple of years and, and been active, been here as often as I possibly can be. Um, we are, as a community, we are woefully an advocate at coming and showing up. I mean, I, I've said this at different podiums around the city, the last two school board budget sessions, I was one of two people and one of four people talking about a budget that was out of hand and now blew up. And so the public, for whatever reason, wants to scream on Facebook and doesn't wanna do anything about it. And so, you know, I, I, I come into this hoping I'll be elected, hoping I can join, but I don't have that answer either. Because we've been trying to do the same thing, to try to get people out, to try to help engage, come and do it. You know, there, but, but people, I don't know, we, we've, we've sort of turned into that soundbite society through social media that that's our only way of going about this. And it's sad, I don't know what the answer is. I do like the idea of whether it's like a town hall or whatever that is, um, you know, Sixteenth Street project had, had good turnout at Perkett. Um, you know, you go to close a couple of schools, you're gonna get good turnout.
So.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, so I, I think, you know, if you, if you start, and, and to your point Harold, if you, we start on a path that says, hey, this essential service that you kinda like, we might decide not to do anymore. Probably have some people come out, you know? So that, it might force some of those conversations because there's, I think there is a contention that just says burn it all out.
True.
But they won't come and say that to you. Maybe one lady last night, one. But that, you know, that's, it's part of the process. But I guess my point is, is that I, I, I have the same frustration you do and I'm not sitting on the council right now. Because I, I would love to see people engaging in a good way, in a meaningful way, in an intelligent way. Um, and, but I don't have the answer either. I think that's, that's one of the biggest challenges we have going forward because, uh, the big news that you talked about a little bit earlier Harold is, is NOS and FLOOD. All the financial things we have going on, to me, that's weighing our entire economy in this city. Not just the city, it's the entire community, it's a huge weight. And then, and we just, we have to get out the back end of that somehow. And I'm hopeful post-two thousand and twenty-nine, we're a little better off after NOS. But like you said, we're, I, I, I see the two thousand and thirty-five number with FLOOD, but that's not the end. We've got maintenance, we've got, we may not even be done by then, but that, that's not gonna release completely.
That's, that's the construction, that's, it's not the payment side.
Yeah, that's, yeah, exactly, so exactly, so we owe money for a lot of that after that. Now hopefully, all the stuff you talked about Dave is that those investments, especially the past ones, are at great rates. So we've gotten a good value for our money with that stuff, but I assume there's some more that come in at rates that are not gonna be as good. So we've got some burdens that are still coming.
And that's part of the work we do when we go down to the legislative session every two years and, and I think that's one thing that City of Minot's done good, since I've been here for sure. Is they've had a plan, they've worked with the legislators and we had a realistic plan. Uh, last time, uh, two years ago in the off season, we met with legislators that were appropriators and said, what's a realistic number for us to ask for FLOOD control? And they kinda gave us a number and we had two scenarios set up and they said, you know what, you should develop a third scenario, what that might look like if. The numbers are really looking good on the revenue side and we find ourselves in a good position, give us a blue sky kind of number. So, and that's what we had done, we had the, the scenarios laid out and we landed right in the middle, which is pretty much where we wanted to be anyway. But we gave them that, that wiggle room where they weren't giving us what they thought was the Cadillac plan. They gave us something in the middle, which is exactly where we wanted to be. But that was all teed up by meeting with the legislators in July, the year before the legislative session and getting that input from those people, uh, and getting that guidance. So we had a pretty good plan crafted when we went down there. And, uh, we are pretty engaged with the legislative session. We go down there and beg for money every two years, uh, we've gotten pretty good and we've been successful. Uh, but we've got these huge projects, um, and that's the only way that they're ever going to happen too.
We'll say back to the community engagement piece and maybe just provide some perspective and maybe some of the elected officials can verify if I'm accurate with this perception or not. But I did, I was a political scientist, that's my undergrad, so I, I've studied political science, so I'm a little bit educated on this. But my thought is, is, one is we're seeing less engagement of the public. This is happening across the country, lower voter turnout, silent majority. It used to be that silent majority didn't show up until the polls and now they're not even showing up at the polls anymore, right? Democracy is built to run on a, a, a government by the people, for the people, right? Well, is there really a government for the people, by the people, if they're not showing up and engaging in government? That's one of the flaws of democracy. But to your point though, earlier, the public shows up when it's an issue that matters to them. We filled council chambers on the Human Relations Committee and those kinds of things, they showed up in force. And you heard Alderman Pitner say, I hope you guys come and engage with us while we're doing the budget process. And we turn around to the budget process and we're back to an empty council chamber. And so from a staff perspective and from probably a council perspective is, in a community of fifty thousand people. Yeah, we may get two or three people come up and speak vocally in opposition to something, but three people out of fifty thousand, and we know that when they're upset, they will fill the council chambers. And if they're not filling the council chambers, we take that as. Assent from the silent majority. And, you know, you as council have your constituencies that I assume you go back and you talk to your, your constituency on to get opinions and thoughts, because you're making a decision on how to vote on an issue and those kinds of things. And so you're, you're engaging in that way with your constituency, which is what you're elected for, right? But when we get in an open public council meeting. Uh, an empty council chamber is, is, is interpreted as assent from the silent majority. That everyone's pretty much okay with it because if they weren't, we'd be talking to a full council meeting. Right? And maybe that's wrong or right, I don't know, but that's, in my understanding is that's kinda how that's interpreted.
And honestly, I mean, early on when I started selected, we did, we had a room full of people. I'm sure, you know, Marcus, you kinda remember that too.
Yeah, and not everybody talked, but, but I mean, they, they, they were, you know.
Yeah, and so it, it has changed in the last decade.
But part of that is, you can watch it live at home.
Well, that's, yes, that's, yes, that's.
You know, it's easier to throw stuff at people too than you are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I know it's getting pretty late and I just kinda wanna set the stage a little bit for tomorrow, cuz to me, tomorrow is the important day. Uh, tomorrow we get our marching orders or our guidance from this group. Um, I keep telling Harold it's his budget, so it's all his fault where we go, but just, just to set the, the stage a little bit. Just looking at what Lisa and I are projecting for salary and health insurance costs. Um, and projecting that, that's two point one million dollars just for the general fund. Just the normal raises, um, and health insurance cost. It's about three point one across the organization. So right out of the blocks, if that, if we maintain that and we don't add another position, we don't change anything else, it's two point one million dollars we have to make up. Uh, that's impacted by our property tax funded departments. So that's the challenge before we add a body, before we do anything else. And you've spent two days listening to all these needs and wants and what would be nicest across the board, somehow we have to figure out how to pay for it. And that's where it gets to be difficult in distilling this down. Somebody has to make the decision, what's more important, do we add three firefighters or do we maintain the status quo someplace else? Do we take money away from fixing streets to fund something else? Um, that's the dilemma that we run into. And like Harold said, I'm not anticipating we're gonna be the most popular people, but that's where we've kinda had some struggles in the past where. Something didn't make it through the first, the first cut and then the lobbying behind the scenes starts. And that gets to be a difficult position because then we're battling it out in council and it's, it's. Things that we thought weren't the priority for the organization that now are becoming a priority at the council. And if somebody else isn't as vocal or doesn't take that step, they're getting left out and something else is being funded that probably shouldn't have been the priority. So that's kind of the challenge, it, it gets to be, it's politics, I get that. Um, but when we're in a tough budget cycle, we have to be firm in our decision making too. I don't know how we're gonna ever budget this if we don't make some tough decisions, but then we have to stand by it and figure out how to make it work too.
Two quick responses, one is I, I really like that you have seen, you can increase the franchise fees, I mean, it seemed like a pretty painless way of getting some money. The second, I think, would be following the guidelines you set out Harold in your memo of a couple of months ago of what are the priorities for, um, the council and, and your priorities and, and what kind of guide us and the department heads in terms of the initial phase. And it was a really long memo and you had like three or four items you numbered in terms of what, what the priorities were, one was public safety, the other was not letting what we have deteriorate, decay any further. And there were a couple of others, but I think that to me seemed like a very sensible kind of, kind of set of priorities and criteria. You know, if you already paid for something, you'd be ashamed to let it, let it fall apart and you certainly have to, you have to protect public safety number one. So I, I would go back and read that.
Yeah, so Dave gave a good segue and that'll be your guys' homework for tomorrow is, we'll need priorities from you. So we'll start tomorrow morning off with Brian Billinsley doing his, uh, department budget, um, and presentation and those kinds of things. But then we're gonna turn over to you as the council. And really, staff's done all the talking for the last two days, so we don't anticipate doing a whole, I mean, we'll, we'll be there to ask, answer questions if you have them, but. Uh, tomorrow is really meant for you as a, as a, as a council, based off of your aspirations. Of what are our priorities and focuses moving forward? And I don't know if I necessarily need you to tell me that you need to, you want me to add three firefighters in the fire department. But I do need to know is which is a higher priority? Adding some additional staff in these areas that have been identified as part of the CPSM study and, uh, community survey? Or is it addressing, um, some of the staff needs with regards to wages? Right? Which is a higher priority? You know, and to Dave's point, and, and again, back to my illustration earlier of, you know, we can cut this pie however way you want to, but at the end of the day, the pie is only so big. So if I'm gonna give fire a, a bigger piece of the pie by adding three new positions and we're gonna add, um. Transitioning to the public safety retirement system for police and fire, well, those are both getting big pieces of pie, that means I have to take some pie from someone else. Right? And we're less done of h- holding a, a pay increase to a two, two and a half percent versus whatever we've traditionally been giving? Or, uh, we offer a more watered down retirement, you know, with, uh, with a defined contribution or whatever that is. Those are the types of things I need to, to weigh. So at the end of the day, what I'm asking is, and I'll use another illustration, cuz I guess I'm, I'm good at those today. You know, we always have that, uh, the illustration of trying to fit a bunch of rocks and sand within a jar? What I need to know from you as council, or what are those big rocks that you wanna make sure I put in that jar? Because everything else is fill and sand around that, right? And so I need to know from you what those priorities are as an organization and as a community going forward. And we've talked about all this stuff, we still haven't talked about workforce development issues, we still haven't talked about childcare issues, we still haven't talked about homelessness, we still haven't talked about, well, we kinda touched on a little bit, affordable housing. Right? All we've talked about for the last two days is the organizational needs. So, and again, to make room for those types of programs means another piece of the pie that we've gotta cut out, that we haven't addressed before. And so I need to know what those priorities are for me as a council, so I can go back and work with my management team and bring you back a recommended budget that accomplishes your priorities. But does the most that we can to provide the best quality services and take care of our employees the best we can going forward.
In terms of the pay, should the research would suggest the message should be, we care about you and you're part of the bigger whole, we support you, we want you to grow and develop and further. Research would suggest that, that money is not among the highest priorities actually. I mean, they, they complain that that's not what, what in modern drafts organizations, experts would tell us.
I, I agree, but I think you all got this, the results with regards to prioritization from the employees with regards to wages, benefits, retirement, more people. Top of the list is more wages, bottom of the list is more people, right? But my job is to look at the organization as a whole. So do I, do I jeopardize the safety of the fire department by not adding three new positions so I can put more money in people's pockets through wages? I have a hard time making that recommendation. But again, I need the prioritization from you as a council about what are, what are those priorities and what am I trying to build in the organization to move us forward? And again, as I stated before, in my opinion, this is a pruning year. And I may not be the most popular person coming and recommending to staff that we're capping at a two percent raise this year. You know? But that also comes back to bite you cuz the next time we do the market study, we're gonna be further behind with regards to, to wages when it comes to a market study, right? So no good deed goes unpunished, right?
Tomorrow at nine o'clock?
Yep.
Eight.
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 Thank you.
Nice try though. I will promise. I will promise not to.